So, welcome everybody to the East Lac Public Meeting. My name's Mary Lee, I'm a councillor in Darnall Ward, that's the one I represent. So, before I introduce or everybody introduces themselves on the committee and our officers introduce themselves, I'm just going to hand over to Philippa Burdette at the end, who's going to talk about the housekeeping arrangements for this evening.
Thank you Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is in the top car park, back through the doors that you came through, and the metal gates will open automatically and just congregate in the car park as far away from the building as you can. The toilet facilities are situated through the doors on that side of the room, turn right and they're on the left-hand side at the bottom of the corridor. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to being filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we do have hearing loops available. If you would like to use one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thanks Philippa. Okay, can I ask people to introduce themselves? So I'll start with Lorraine.
Good evening everybody, I'm Lorraine Wood and I'm Head of Communities.
Good evening everyone, my name's Huda Ahmed and I'm the Local Area Committee Manager for the East Lac.
Hello, my name's Diane Hurst, I'm a Richmond Ward member.
Hi, my name is Ben Miskill, I'm one of the councillors in Park and Alberthorpe.
Hi everyone, Zahira Nas, councillor for the Darnall Ward.
Good evening, I'm David Barker, I'm the councillor for Richmond Ward.
Mike Drabbell, elected member for Richmond.
Hi, I'm Philippa Burdette, committee secretary.
Now, by the door we've got Abby Wilson, who is Community Support Officer for Darnall and Richmond Ward. So she supports the councillors and the community in those wards. Okay. About how the meeting's going to work today, we've got some formal business to do, you know, Green Minutes and so on and so forth. We've got Huda Ahmed, our manager, who's going to talk about how we, the proposed spend for the area, for our area. We've got two presentations, one on the Economic Recovery Fund and one on the Holiday Activity Fund. And we've got people from the council and people from the community, who I'll introduce when we come to them, who are going to talk about those two funds and what's been happening recently with the money that we've spent in this area. Just let me check, what else? And that's it, so we proceed. So, any apologies for absence?
We have apologies, sorry, councillor Murphy, councillor Fox, councillor Ickbow, councillor Richards, councillor Wilson and councillor Molana. Thank you.
With the press and public, any reasons why we need to know? declarations of interest? No? Is that an agreement? Yeah? No, can I go on a minute? Can I just go through the minutes properly first? Before we get to any comments, I just want to go through the minutes and let the committee agree that they are a true record and let the committee comment some long if they want to. So, can we agree they are a true record as far as the committee is concerned? Any matters arising? To you. And we've got another set of minutes that should place on the 18th of May. This was when the committee members were installed. And can we agree those? And I don't think there'll be any matters arising about those, but can the committee formally agree? Please, can I just take it in order? So we've had a comment about something that might have been missing from... Okay, well, I'm speaking to the microphone now. I don't know whether it can go any louder than this? If you could... Okay. Is that better? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we've had a comment from a gentleman who thinks that Terry Fox made some comments that are not in the minutes. I will go back, those will go back and we'll check that. So, the gentleman on that table there with the glasses? The committee have to agree, not the members of the public. Okay. Well, I will go back and check and that will come to the next meeting. That will go, I will go back and we'll check that and it will come to the next meeting. Okay, is the lady there on the front table? Yeah? Excuse me, I'm sorry, could you stand up because your voice will carry that up? And I, yes, you do need to...
It was mentioned that the proposal reduced the number of available spaces outside Parkhill Community Building. There was also no waiting, which doesn't make any grammatical sense, restrictions or provision for disabled parking. It was suggesting that a parking charge be implemented. It certainly, most certainly was not suggested that a parking charge be implemented. What was suggested was that consideration should be given to a restriction on parking before 9:30am. So, most of that is absolute nonsense, to be honest. It is not an accurate record of what I said and it is frankly incomprehensible because of the appalling grammar within the paragraph. There was also no waiting restrictions or provision for disabled parking. What was actually said was that the current restrictions around Park Centre are onus, that we are subject to no parking round three sides of the building for the whole working day. And I do beg you to actually make an accurate record of what I said and I shall submit a written record of what I said if it can't be done properly by the authorities.
Thank you for your comments. What we'll do then, we'll ensure you, we've got an accurate record of what you've said. I think Philippa will come to you at the end of the meeting, committee clerk will come to you at the end of the meeting and take a record of what you think you said, what you believe you said at that meeting and we'll make sure that that gets put into the next meeting, next minutes of the next meeting.
Question of accuracy, item 6.7, NJ Hill says, "In relation to the Parkhill parking scheme, it was asked if speed cameras on Donnington Road were linked to the TOR." That is nonsense, that is nothing, nowhere near what I said and I will provide you with an alternative.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. We've agreed the minutes and we've taken the comments from the public. I think now we will move on to Huda's presentation. Thank you.
Thanks Mary. So, can you hear me everybody? Yeah? Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. So, I refer you to a report, you should have a copy on your desk and it's headlined, "Report of the East Lac Proposed Spending 22/23." If I can direct you to page 3 of the report and the heading proposal. So, if you remember from the last meeting we had, at the last public meeting, I presented the East Lac Community Plan. And the East Lac Community Plan was developed in consultation with residents, community groups and other stakeholders living in the East Lac. And the East Lac covers four wards, Manor Castle, Alberthorpe, Richmond and Darnall Wards. And at that meeting, we agreed the plan and we agreed the priorities that residents said mattered to them the most. And we've had debates in the past about this and people said, "Well, these are not new issues, we've been talking about them for quite a long time," which is fine because they are important issues. And those priorities for us as an East Lac are six, they are children, young people, the environment, crime and antisocial behaviour, health and wellbeing, communities and neighbourhoods and highways and transport. We also said at the last meeting that each lac has been allocated £100,000 budget to spend on those priorities. And if you turn to page 4 of the report, what we've done there is we've kind of described how we're going to go about spending the £100,000. These are just proposals at the moment. So what we're saying is, if you look at the table that I've done, what we've done is we've allocated £50,000 for children and young people. And that £50,000 is split up into, suppose, three parts. The first part is we're proposing to give each of the wards £2,500 to spend on projects related to children and young people. Up to £20,000 we're proposing to spend on antisocial behaviour and that's mainly on projects that could include working with the police or the violence reduction unit. And it's really focusing on ideas, initiatives, projects that actually work and that actually have been proven to kind of tackle antisocial behaviour. And the third one is up to another £20,000 we're proposing to spend on promoting projects around children and people, particularly around health and wellbeing. And these could include, more recently, the cost of living crisis and how that's impacting on people's health and wellbeing. The other priority that we're going to give money to is, we're proposing to give money to, if you like, is the environment's priority. So that's around making sure that we develop projects that tackle fly tipping and waste. And we're proposing to give them £20,000 and that could be projects around education campaigns or Day of Action on litter. And we want kind of projects to kind of link to other local area priorities. The third priority we're proposing to give money to is issues around communities and neighbourhoods. Again, projects there, £10,000 on projects tackle any local neighbourhood issues that members of the public bring up or local councils bring up. And again, we're trying to focus on health and wellbeing and issues around social exclusion and so on. And then another project up to £10,000 is to do with issues around loneliness and isolation, particularly the impact of Covid that's had on particular communities. And we're targeting mainly maybe the elderly community in that project. And on page 5, if you turn to page 5, what we've done is we've put aside £10,000 for contingency. And that's really to take account of anything that actually we've not taken, we've not put a spending proposal to, issues for our benefit as a contingency. So, what am I asking you to do today as a committee? Well, I'm asking, I'm seeking your authorisation, if you like, and permission as the East Local Area Committee Service Manager in consultation with the Chair, Mary Lee, to spend the budget as outlined in the paper. That's about it. Thank you Chair.
On this first, it went from the public here today and then I'm going to ask the committee to agree that spend and make any comments. So, no questions? So, any comments first of all? Oh, sorry Jonathan, go on.
Right, I've got one. When you're looking at children and young people and you're saying like two and a half grand per ward, up to £10,000 in total, each ward's got a different number of kids. So, are you actually distributing money so we can find out what it is per child? Does that make sense? If you've got like 50 kids in one area getting a couple of grand and 600 kids in another grand just getting, 600 kids in another area still getting that same amount of money, it's not equally distributed. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, what I want to know is have you taken into account how many kids are in each area? It can run through with all these like communities and neighbourhoods or waste tackling tipping and waste. Some areas will be really bad at it and some will be, they won't have any. So, can you actually redistribute it from one area to another as well?
Right, so, if you can, at the last meeting we talked about the different, the other different funding schemes that each lac have access to. So each ward will have access to ward pots and the ward pots are given based on the indices of deprivation. They will have taken account the kind of the needs and the employments and so on. So that's the £2,500 that we're proposing to give additional to the ward pots is really to kind of think about what else, what additional things do we need to put in place to kind of look at specific issues around children and young people. I know what you're saying, it doesn't really answer your question, but it's in addition to what we already have, what we already have. And then the others, the whole £100,000 budget that we've got is really for the whole lac. We're not really supposed to distinguish who gets more, it's project to develop to improve the whole people living in the whole lac, whether it's to do with children and people, to do with the environment, the highways. And it's thinking through what do we need to focus on, what are the key projects that we need to kind of target to make sure that we're making those improvements?
We're in the cost of living crisis and we're also in a climate and ecological emergency. And there's nothing on here about insulation. Insulation should be the top priority. We've got people can't afford to eat their homes and we've got people wasting the gas because it's just flying out the roof. And we've got to reduce our emissions. So insulation should be somewhere on this list, even if it's just someone to advise people how they can insulate their homes better or to do something along those lines. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, the spend is based on the priorities that people set out for us. We did a survey last year, I can't remember exactly how many replies we got, but we got a significant number compared to what usually, the numbers that usually respond to surveys and consultations. And the priorities are the ones that are written here. So these are the priorities that people identified as important for them in this lac area and that's why the £100,000 has been distributed in that way.
And if I can just add to that, I was looking at the planning applications list this week. This is the money that the lac spends, but there is also a wider council budget and we've agreed a 10-point action plan for climate change. We've also agreed certain measures through the housing budget, the main spend of the council. And when I was looking through the planning list this week, I noticed that we'd already, according to the budget that we set last year, started applying for planning permission to do cladding schemes on some of the worst affected properties on the basis that you start with the worst and you save the most energy there. And we also have schemes that are currently going on around re-roofing and insulating roofs. So, even if we spent a whole of the £100,000, it would barely touch the side of the climate crisis that we've got at the moment or the energy crisis. But this is our money to target local priorities. We've got the wider council budget that will look at the strategic priorities for the people of Sheffield.
Does that answer your question Graham?
Those of us who were at the Transport, oh hello, can you hear me in the concert room? Yeah, those of us that were at the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee meeting the other week will probably remember that a guy did ask a sensible question about putting something out of the main council budget into advising people about things such as insulation. So that was, I think it's unfortunate councillor Ickbow's not here, but I'm sure he would recall it immediately. But there was a question asked and there was, I'm pretty sure, a positive response that the council, the wider council from a different budget would actually look at setting on some sort of advice, advisor that people could go to, rather than be fobbed off by cowboys, you know what it's like, but the real McCoy. So you might want to, you might want to chase councillor Ickbow up on that, there I see.
Thank you for that, yeah. I mean, obviously the council, the wider council itself does a massive amount of work in terms of not just insulation but on climate change and other issues related to that. And as you said Graham, £100,000 is not much. And these, the spend that we are going to agree tonight was what people said, what people said was the priorities for them in this area. Okay, so, as there's no more, one, one more if it's on this?
Right. John Harker, I'm a volunteer with Sheffield Litter Pickers, particularly the Manonites branch, under environment projects that tackle fly tipping and waste. I noticed that there's no mention of taking much stronger enforcement action on people who drop litter, particularly fly tips. I mean, education is all very well, but I'm a great believer in the stick as well as the carrot. And I know councillor Fox was boasting to me a few weeks ago about how many, how many more prosecutions and fines were being handed out. Why is the enforcement side of it not given greater priority? And what happens to the money that comes in from the fines and the court fines? Does that go back into the environment project or is that absorbed by other council departments?
So, the lacs, in addition to this money, this £100,000 that we've given for community projects, well, we're also given £100,000 per lac to spend on the environment. And that has been with, when we have a project team who are using that money to tackle enforcement, to tackle fly tipping and to tackle graffiti. And that is a citywide project and £100,000 went to each lac to tackle that. So, some of that was spent on project officers and £57,000 was spent, given to each lac to tackle hotspots in their particular areas. So that's what that money's for. So in addition to the £100,000, we have had some money for fly tipping. And I agree with you, enforcement is one of the most important things we need to do and we have had a couple, we have had one day of action in the lac area and we are going to be rolling this programme out of tackling some of the issues you mentioned, whether it's litter, fly tipping and looking at people who are in need of advice and information about how to get rid of their fly, their rubbish, their bulky items, telling them how to do that and how much it might cost them. We're doing, we're going, so I see an education programme and where we, where we need to enforce action, we will be doing that, where we need to take enforcement action, we will do that. But this is, enforcement is a citywide issue, not just an issue for the lac. And so, how we spend that £20,000, we've got further discussions to have about that. And we're working very closely with all our environmental officers, whether it's our own in the council or whether it's with AMI as well.
Comes in from any fines that you hand out. The legal question is, you haven't answered, all these days of action are all very well, shoving leaflets through people's door. We've got one in Castlebeck Park and Viking Lee next Tuesday, which I shall be involved in. But shoving leaflets through people's doors and trying to educate people is not enforcement action. I've repeatedly found envelopes with names and addresses in fly tip stuff, I give them to the council and that's a last over here with it. I mean, if you can't prosecute somebody or enforce something against somebody who's been stupid enough to leave their own contact details in a pile of fly tipping, if you can't do a simple thing like that, what's the point in me reporting stuff and other litter picker volunteers reporting stuff? And the answer we get back is, "Oh, you know, we haven't got enough enforcement officers, it would cost us too much to prosecute them." We'll get the costs of them. But that's, that's the thing to do. And if you hand out a few really stiff fines, where it gets around? These cowboys in the white vans that go around fly tipping, you know, will soon get the message. Sorry, it's...
Okay, so as far as I understand it, any money that's from fines goes back into the service? Okay, that's, that's an answer to one of your questions. In terms of the days of actions that we have wanted since, we've got one, as you say, in Castlebank next week. It's not just about putting a leaflet through somebody's door, it's about knocking on doors. Obviously, you know, we don't expect everybody to be at home, but we will be knocking on doors and giving advice out as well. So it's not, we will be speaking to as many people as we possibly can during that day of action in Castlebank. That's what happened in Tinsley a few weeks ago. I'm going to bring Ben in.
I think I would agree with the gentleman here about enforcement and the importance of enforcement. I think one of the things I would say is that enforcement, just like any issue in the council, has been incredibly hit by the budget cuts that have happened since 2010. However, that shouldn't be used as an excuse because the reality is we do need to do better when it comes to enforcement and particularly about fly tipping. If you're talking about reporting issues to the council and being able to supply names and addresses of individuals who have perhaps fly tipped and you're not getting the response that you require back, then actually council does need to do better with that. And I would encourage you to ask further questions, to turn up to the committee on waste, to be asking questions, to be talking about it. I would agree that actually, I think we probably do need to do better when it comes to enforcement really. And it's all well and good as talking about educating people, that's clearly very important and you do such a great role there in terms of Sheffield Litter Pickers and going around and providing that wonderful visible presence from our community. But fundamentally, we also need to make sure that it's backed up by a little bit of teeth as well because people who disregard our communities and drop waste and deliberately leave it in our communities for the local taxpayer to pick up, it's completely unacceptable. So I would agree with you, more needs to be done.
Sure that we've lost half our budgets in, over the last 10 years and we have a very difficult budget this year and next.
Thank you Chair. I suppose I'd just like to ask, what can we do to ensure fairness when organisations are applying for this money and when it's being distributed? Because often the usual pattern when funds such as this are applied for and disputed is that they go, that most of the funds go to larger organisations. Why? Because such organisations often have a bid writing capacity that smaller, more grassroots organisations don't. I think there's an inherent bias there that we need to address. So I'm just asking, what can we do to ensure actually that those many small organisations all across our lac and across our communities get a fair crack in the whip at this and the money isn't swallowed by those organisations who often exist for bid writing? Thanks.
We've got procedures in place for that very reason, Mike, to make, to ensure there is fairness and opportunities for all and access to the funds. And we will follow those procedures with all of this as well. So if we're administering them as grants, then there is set procedures... So if we're administering them as grants, then there is set procedures that we, so that equality, diversity, there's a fairness in them. So that will be applied to all these monies.
So first I'd like to ask then what those procedures are and if we could get a site of those procedures. Secondly, could I ask, you know, how does that address the point that larger organisations, which have inbuilt bid writing capacity, have an inbuilt advantage in applying for funds like this? How do our procedures specifically address the point that smaller organisations simply don't have that capacity and therefore often don't even apply?
So for bid writers, you're right. So what we can do is our officers, our community services officers can support those organisations to write those bids.
Thank you, Chair.
I think as local councillors as well, we know many of, most of the organisations in our local areas and we know who delivers. And that includes the small organisations as well. And we all, we can all contribute to the discussions about the hundred K spend that we have. Does that answer your point?
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
It's just a quick question about the litter picking and part of the Sheffield Litter Pickers, I go every week. One thing is the lack of waste bins. They've actually removed the waste bins in our area. So that's made it worse. I've complained about it, nothing's been done. And the other thing is the council website where you report fly tipping and waste is terrible. The map, it doesn't work, it's really hard. So you have to go to Fix My Street, which is an external website, and they report it to the council, which makes delays. Why don't they fix the council website? It's terrible. And if you try to ring up, it takes ages to get a reply.
Fix My Streets is a good service and it does get to the council, it's just a little bit.
The council should be providing this service.
I'll just saying that it does get, it does reach the council. It takes a few days to reach the council, but it does get there. That's the reports I've got back as well. Which area do you live in? Because I don't.
I live in Norfolk Park. I've done litter picks with Ben and we've got a big group in our area. But there's, there's no waste bins. We've started putting black sacks. Spring Lane is terrible. So we put black sacks on the railings and they are putting the rubbish there. So why, why aren't the bins and encourage people to use it?
I can't comment on specifically about Norfolk Park, I don't know if Ben wants to say anything about that. To buy a bin, it doesn't cost that much, but to get it on a round and maintain it and pay for it over a number of years, that's where the cost goes up. I think sometimes, sometimes there's a trend in Sheffield at the moment to put your, a black bag full of rubbish next to a litter bin. And in some areas, that is a blight on the, on the streets. And I think if, I don't know, you must have an arrangement with AIG to pick those bins.
We report it, we put it and say it's been picked by the litter pickers and where it is, leave it in a layby or something, yeah.
Thank you. And thank you also for the wonderful work that you do with Sheffield Litter Pickers in Norfolk Park. I think that's a really interesting point that you make about bins really. Clearly Norfolk Park has gone through quite a radical transformation over the last decade. And actually perhaps that needs us to be thinking a little bit more creatively about the amounts of bins that are in that area. We now have thousands more residents than we did do a decade ago. We're living in in the area and there's significant increase in the number of housing. So I'd love to work with you in order to, to think about how we can think creatively about getting more bins into the area. You know, it's clearly a problem. We need to make sure, yes, that there's enforcement action there for those people who do make the wrong decision to drop litter deliberately. But equally need to make it easy for people to make the right choices. And that means making sure that we've got litter bins in those areas. So yes, I'd love to come and chat to you later about how we can work together to get more litter bins in Norfolk Park. It's such an important thing.
Okay, thanks. That's then off for you. I think we've agreed the spend, we've made the comments and there's been some questions. I don't think there's any more from what I can see. We'll report back on, on the outcomes of this spend as it future meetings. So Lowy's going to introduce this and talk about this. And then we've got a practical example of how a grant was applied for and spent or about to be spent. I'm not quite sure where we are with that in, in the Manor Castle Ward. The Economic Recovery Fund was, it was two million allocated to be spent on district centres to improve those areas, to encourage people, particularly after Covid, to go back into those areas and, and use them and shop and so on. So I'll hand over to you now if you want to explain that.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Shake if you can't. Thank you very much for inviting me here today. I'm really excited to join you this evening and talk about something I've been working on for the past kind of just over a year. My name's Sarah Lowey Jones. I actually am an economic policy officer working in the council's economic strategy team. And working on this project has been such a privilege. So I'm just really excited to share just a bit of an overview with you this evening about what it is, kind of how it's functioned, some of the projects we've funded, some of the successes we've had so far and what you can expect to see over the next few months. And then I'll obviously hand over to Dawn, who'll talk about the project that's been funded for your area. Okay, so in terms of where this fund's come from, councillor Lee has just mentioned that this is very much a Covid response that the councils initiated. So the council during the pandemic worked really closely with some of its business partners and created what was called the Business Recovery Plan. We're still working for that now. It's still kind of one of the main strategic documents that we have. And I'd really encourage anyone who's interested to find that online and look that up. So the Economic Recovery Fund came from that. It's a response to local high streets and district centres really struggling from the restrictions that were placed on them and obviously us as residents in our areas. And the need really to encourage them to safely reopen and encourage more people to come down and use our amazing local shops. So that's its purpose really, it's to encourage economic recovery in district and local centres. And that's about generating demand, by which we mean people coming down and enjoying the shops, having confidence to do so and supporting really hard-hit sectors, those kind of hospitality, retail, leisure sectors that had to shut down. The one thing I should say up top is that it's really quite different as an approach that the council's taken here. You know, we, we set up this grant fund as, in a very open way. We've allowed people to come forward with their ideas. We've very much not prescribed solutions for the local high streets. We've wanted people to come forward with those themselves because we think that local people know best what might be the intervention that works best for them. So we've tried to tread really hard to collaborate with people at the same time as well. So, you know, just in relation to the question that councillor Draball just raised, we've worked with applicants really strongly throughout the, throughout the process so that the application that comes forward is the strongest it can be. We've tested it before it gets scored, we've supported people with information where it's required and we've advised them on things that may or may not work, you know, for whatever they're proposing. So in terms of the structure of the fund, it was kind of split into two pots. There was a small pot that people could apply for, which was up to fifty thousand pounds, or a large pots of up to two hundred thousand pounds that could be applied for. And there was a really standardised, transparent set of criteria that we used for scoring. And we created a steering group that was, that consisted of senior councillors, senior officers and private sector representatives as well to really give a breadth of opinion on the, on the applications that were coming forward, which we thought was really important and actually added so much value to the process. In terms of eligibility, again, we tried not to be prescriptive, so we left it very open. And there were really four criteria that we asked people to meet in order for their application to be scored. So the first one was that it represented a true collaboration of people from the local area. So it could be business-led, councillor-led, council officer-led, third sector organisation-led, but it had to represent a breadth of views and kind of a wider, wider viewpoint than just one really. The second eligibility criteria was about benefits. So this is really different to other Covid business grants you may have heard of before. It's not about individual businesses applying for individual business benefits. These grants were set up to be a benefit to the broader area, to the high street, to the district centre. And so that was the absolute key criteria there. There was a third criteria as well around additionality. That's something we kind of use in economic terms, but it really means, would it have happened anyway? So if you're coming to us and asking for a grant, do you have the wherewithal and the funds for that to happen without our support? Or would having our support make it happen bigger, better, faster? That was one of the tests we had. And the fourth test actually turned out to not be very useful because restrictions were lifted fairly soon after the fund was launched. But it was around how Covid security measures or considerations have been taken into account. So that was kind of the structure and process of the fund, if you like. So I hope that kind of makes sense. Obviously I'll take any questions at the end if that's okay. In terms of getting the message out, again, I think really importantly, obviously we did some public communications around it. We did press announcements and we had councillors talking in the media. But really important for us, we used the networks we already had. So we used our business information officers who've been employed as consultants throughout the pandemic, who were literally hitting the high streets, knocking on doors, working with businesses to make sure they have access to grants, access to information and support to conduct their businesses in a Covid-secure manner. And we use them really, they were our key to unlocking the relationships in district and local centres. And they did a fantastic job kind of getting the message out there, I think, to lots of different places. So that kind of, I hope, explains a bit about the fund and kind of how it's worked so far. In terms of the successful projects that we funded, we received over a hundred applications, which we were pretty delighted with. There were sixty four for small projects and forty, I think that matters right there, forty for larger projects. And the list of them is up there. Now you'll see, I kind of flipped those into two groups. So the group on the right, these all took place last year over summer. So we were really, a couple of things happened that were really fortuitous. And the first was that we realised very early on that there were a set of projects that were about delivering events largely in the city centre. But they were about delivering events that would happen, need to happen really quickly. And the council was already conducting a campaign called Summer in the Outdoor City, which was again kind of externally funded, but about encouraging people to come down, enjoy the city centre again, use those hard-hit sectors of retail, leisure, hospitality and really bring vibrancy back. And we have a lot of applications come through that were really in support of that goal. So we were able to use some funding from additional, from a separate government grant to kind of allow those to happen. So they kind of were part funded by ERF, part funded by something called ARG, and they all happened last year. And there's a showreel of, kind of give you a snapshot of what that delivered that you can find on YouTube. And I'll ask Hudda if it's possible to circulate that with the notes. Thank you. The projects on the left are all kind of district centre based. So the list there, this represents businesses on the local high street coming together as traders associations, as groups of friends of groups and many others coming together, sitting around a table and saying, what can we do to really lift our high street, encourage people back? And it's really interesting that the applications we got through really reflected the discussions they'd had. They were really individual, they reflected what was important to the groups in each of those local areas. So for, just to pick out a couple of examples, in Broom Hill, they have this focus on greening the area. So they wanted to do a shopfront scheme that used carbon capturing paint, which I didn't even know existed, as well as doing planting and creating a green wall and a kind of nature-based mural. Woodhouse wanted to really reanimate their market square and have monthly events that, you know, brought people down and got people celebrating the local area more. And, you know, the list goes on. So it was really interesting. But I think in terms of our purpose, that outcome really did ring true. Asking people what they would do for their local area really drew out some interesting and different ideas. But they did also have kind of three pillars for the applications. The other thing that was really interesting was that they all kind of had some kind of, what I'd call events and animation activity. So, you know, having an event or a trail or some kind of music night, something like that. They all had an element of placemaking, so that might be something a bit more physical about the street scene, such as lamp post banners, benches, bins, parklets, things like that. And they also all reflected on, you can do these nice things, but if you don't talk to people about them, they're not going to know. So all of them had a kind of marketing and promotion kind of element to them as well. So it gives you a flavour. Unfortunately, my next couple of slides, which gave you loads of really nice pictures of what's been done already, I couldn't send it because it was too large. So again, I'll figure out a way of sharing some of the images that we've got for you already. Because we've delivered quite a lot. So since July twenty twenty one, last year, well over eighty events have been delivered. We, and actually as a result of Summer in the Outdoor City and those events, we were the most improved city in terms of footfall. Footfall was up thirty three percent, which actually represents eighty nine percent of pre-pandemic figures, which is astounding when you think of when we were kind of the year before, which was ghost town. This year, we expect to see at least thirty more events happen and a range of street scene improvements, including two or three parklets, quite a number of benches, murals and street art, which is really exciting, I think. There are lamp post banners in a number of areas, which you may already have noticed around and about. And like I said, potentially a green wall in Broom Hill as well, subject to planning. So there's a whole range of activities still to take place. And I hope you'll all kind of watch out for the news of that as and when it happens really. So I suppose the final thing to say really is just that the ERF, the Economic Recovery Fund, will continue for council deciding in February that it wanted to allocate a new two million pounds to do this work of supporting district and local centres. So the steering group that we set up to oversee this piece of work has been re-established. Councillor Missball's been invited to sit on that. And over the summer, that group will be deciding the kind of shape and purpose of that fund going forward. Because obviously the context has changed. I can't stand here and tell you now we'll run exactly the same thing again. We need to, we need to rethink, we need to take stock, we need to learn from what we've done already. But hopefully come September, we'll, we'll take a paper back to the committee and take a decision on how that will move forward. But I think either way, we've learnt so much from working in this way. And that's something, you know, we're really hopeful to share with Hudda and the rest of the lack teams. And I think it's also changed the way we will do business support as a council as well. So having these business information officers in place, working on a human level, you know, businesses having a person they can talk to about something they're struggling with or a grant they need to access, I think has changed how our business support services work as well. So that, you know, there's lots to take from what the Recovery Fund has done. But I'll leave it there and take any questions and obviously then hand over to Dawn. Yeah, yeah. Sorry, yeah. Okay. Yeah, sorry if I went on.
That's all right. Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me? I am quite loud anyway. Is that all right? Yeah, I don't really need a microphone, but I'll use it anyway. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I've not, I've not done a PowerPoint because I know there were quite a few this evening. So I'm just going to give you an update about where we are with the Manor Park, Heart of Manor Park project, how it started, where we are and where we're going on the project. So we were approached by the council after a consultant had come into the area to do some consultation with the shopkeepers on Manor Park Centre to find out what the local issues were. From that consultation, there were a number of things that arose and we were approached to help to write a bid for, to submit, for, to have a look at and see whether or not our area would be successful. As part of that consultation, we looked at the need for the project and there were a number of areas which had arisen. One of those being that Covid nineteen had brought about some challenges for local businesses. There were environmental issues with regards to the area feeling a little dull and grey. We'd got some vandalism in around and lots of litter and large expanses of tarmac and just a grey area really. And then we wanted to support local businesses by increasing footfall to stimulate the local economy. So what we, what we looked at was a bit of an uplift. There are two elements to our project in Manor Park. And one of those is the addressing the physical environment. So making the space feel safe and increase footfall. And I'll go a little bit further to tell you how that is going to be done and who's involved. And also to deliver a programme of events which will encourage larger footfall, not just from residents that live in Manor Park, but I don't know if anybody's aware of the area. We've got lots of new house buildings, so we'll have got lots of new residents coming into the area that won't really know much, so we want to get them into our community and using the shops. So I'd like to just go through what we will do. So we've set up a steering group. The steering group meets monthly at the moment. And I do feel that they're going to be meeting more regularly. We have a major steering group and we have two subgroups. One of the subgroups is looking at our events and engagement and the other subgroup is looking at our piece of community artwork. Because it's a lot to ask for, lots of people to come to lots of different meetings. So they've picked their areas of interest. So they've picked their areas of interest. The people that are currently on the steering group are our community engagement officer Ella from the LAC, myself as their Manor Castle Development Trust Community Development Coordinator. Local shopkeepers are involved in that steering group. Representative from the local co-op, a local elected member and it's councillor Murphy that attends the meetings. We've got a number of local residents on that as well. Together Housing, which is a local landlord, are involved. Temple Park Centre is a partner. Manor Park Tenants and Residents Association, Park Community Action, sorry, Park Academy. I've got the wrong one. I'm looking at Rosalie and thought Park Community Action. Park Academy are involved as well, as well as Manor Castle School Kids Club and the Scouts. And Manor Knights are part of that steering group as well. So like I said, there are two elements to that. The physical improvements element of the project has included increasing capacity of the bins on the shops. We've already put an extra bin in at the bottom of the shops. I've been out on the shops today to ask and yesterday, asking shopkeepers if they feel that it's made an improvement. And they've said it is being used and it is being emptied three times a week. So that's good, in line with the agreement that we've got with AMA. We are working on replacing a damage notice board on the entryway into the centre. We have got a panel that are going to be looking at a piece of community artwork. We've got three expressions of interest from artists from across the city. And we will be meeting next week to decide, there's a panel of local people, to decide which artist would be a better fit for our community. So the piece of community artwork must represent and include local people. So while we've got a budget for artwork, what we're not asking for is somebody to simply come and paint on a gable end to, you know, to make it look nice. They must come into our community groups, work with our local schools, older people, all of the groups so that they're engaged in the artwork, so that they're represented when the artwork is on the edge of the building. We're also putting new planters on the shops so that it looks brighter. At that point, we have got an organisation coming in to do that for us, but with, again, with the community. So the legacy will be that community groups will adopt the planters. So we've got two years' maintenance in there. But once the funding for the maintenance has gone, we will have got local community groups that will have been trained up about the sort of plants to plant, how often they need looking after, how they need watering, all that sort of stuff. And then we did put in the application another project called Keep Manor Park Tidy Campaign, which would include putting up signage, working with the local schools, working with local children to design the, design all of the stuff. That wasn't put through on this application. But actually, the Manor Park Tenants and Residents Association have offered the funding for the signage and Park Academy have said that they will work with us on that, with the young people in the area and with Manor Knights so that we can do some events around litter picking and keeping, being proud of our community and keeping it clean. So we do have an event planned for this summer to launch the planters, get people involved, which is the 12th of August, 12:30. And we have got a local group of people that are helping us to plan that. So that's the event side of things. We've also got the marketing element of it. So we've got somebody doing our marketing. We now have a Facebook page called Heart of Manor Park. We're also going to be doing a regular newsletter. So we do put stuff in the shops monthly to give people an update. But we're going to be spreading that out wider and getting that out to new residents and people that are already living in our community. So, yeah, I think that's kind of where we are at the moment. We've, so the next event after the August one, which will be the big one for the launching of the artwork. We're mindful that we were already delayed here as well because we didn't get the go-ahead till February. So we've only kind of been doing this since March. So we're kind of running at pace now to try and get things sorted. As part of this, historically, anybody from Manor Park might know that we used to put Christmas lights up on Manor Park shops historically. And that is what we're going to be doing this year. So we are working with local shopkeepers about having Christmas lights and on the shops and on the lampposts. But the whole point of this is not simply about spending. And we did get just over £49,000 for the area. This is not just about spending this £49,000, this is about the legacy of the money. So it's about ensuring that we are engaged with local community members around the environmental element of it, around fundraising annually to keep things going. So as part of the event budget, we got given a lump of money. And I'm happy to share this report and this can come out with the minutes, with the budgeting and everything, if everybody wants to see that, it's absolutely fine. We were given a budget for market stalls. So when we've met with local people about having these markets and events in and around the shops, it was going to cost us a lot of money to bring in people, to lend us stuff. So we were going to loan market stalls. And actually, it's worked out a lot better for us to buy it and keep it in the community as a community asset, so as that local shopkeepers will have that legacy so we can continue to run local engagement events and markets in and around the community. So they will be accessible for people to use. So if anybody's got any questions, I'm happy to give out the links to everything or send out the notes and let everybody know when our future meetings are. If anybody's got any questions? That's all right then?
Oh, here we go. Do it like this. Right. You say you're putting out for artists to do this, right?
Yes.
How much have they been paid?
The budget for the artwork, the whole budget for the artwork is £10,000.
Okay.
But that includes materials, that includes the workshop work in with the community. So it's not, we don't just want to pay £10,000 to come and plonk something on end of building. They've got to get out into communities, work with our groups, come into schools and that sort of stuff. It sounds like a lot of money, but actually, if you're looking at the work they're going to be doing, it's not that much to find. It's a big gable end.
I brought, well, the university when I was doing my PhD, we brought in a Mexican, well, an Italian artist. And we shipped him in and kept him here for two weeks and I made him work in every school. And he put smoke in a posh area of Sheffield because we couldn't find a wall at the time. What I'm asking you is, can you please try and reach out further into communities? Because on our communities, we've got some seriously good artists. There were some really good artists on Manor. And your best way to do it is probably, you could ask in schools and ask them, because a lot of the mums and dads are artists as well. But I'd go into town shops and all and ask there, because we've got some really good artists.
So can I just come back on that?
Bring them in from another bit.
Yeah, so we had, I put it on my own personal Facebook page anyway. And all of the local community members that are involved, we reached out, the shopkeepers. We've got a shopkeeper on Manor Park who's also got a store on Calum Island, who's having artwork done. So we've asked local people, we've worked with local schools, I've contacted local college.
Kayakine, Calum Island Art Collective.
Yeah, so we've reached out to West One, we've reached out through universities, we've reached out through our, the art network, but we have reached out into our communities. You know, you and I know, Jonathan, our community is a word of mouth. So we have, you know, we have been out there, we've asked people if they know anybody, you know, local. We've got lots of young talent as well. But what we don't just want is the artwork. They've got to have got the skill to come into a school or an older people's dementia group or whatever it is to be able to engage with people and get them to be involved in the artwork.
I'm just hearing this money going out to Milsley Monks in Netheredge and Mearsbrook.
Well, I've got three, I've got three artists that've got his questions of interest, it's fine. And one of them worked in our area. So he's been into our area.
Living area.
I can find out, but I can, we can have a conversation. I can find out for you definitively, yeah.
Take it away, take it away.
Yeah. Yes, you know, you know where I am if you need me for any questions. Yeah. Sorry about that. Holiday Activity Fund, this is a programme that's been delivered across the city with, for a number of years. A couple of years ago, we started, we only had about £100,000 to spread across some of our areas. And there's a significant amount of money now available. And some of this obviously comes to this LAC area. So we've got two people to talk about that, what happens on the ground in, to talk about the fund itself and also to talk about what's been happening over the last couple of years in this area and what might happen this year. So who's going first? Yeah, sorry, thank you. So do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, I'm Elizabeth Cladwell.
I am working on the Holiday Activity with Food Fund. And as Mary said, we've been delivering holiday activities with food for a number of years now on a very large, a smaller scale compared to what we have now. So we're in the third year of the DFE-funded Holiday Activity with Food Programme. So the funding comes directly from central government. The first year was 2020 and Vav, Voluntary Action Sheffield, I need to slow down, I can speak too fast. Voluntary Action Sheffield won the contract for that. And they were one of about 20 local authorities nationally that piloted the programme. Unfortunately for them and for the young people and families, that was, it was marred by COVID. So really, that was a struggle, I believe. And a lot of the interventions was activity packs, online interventions and food hammers. So the last year was our first year that the council delivered this fully. So we got roughly about £2.7 million funding to spread across the city over six holidays, six weeks of holidays, one week at Easter, four weeks over summer and one week at Christmas. So the funding is primarily for those children who are eligible and in receipt of free school meals during school term time. And this is to address the holiday gap when those kids are out of school. So it's to have a holiday activity offer with food for those children of course the city that they could access during the holidays. Oh, no, that's, sorry, I'm wrong. Right, that's yours, Debbie. Sorry, guys. Ah, here we go. Yeah, that's me. So the project sits within the Commissioning Department and the council and is jointly led by Jess Wilson, who is in place Public Carried Food and Obesity Policy, and by Emma Dickinson, who is the People Keeping Well Lead in the council. And I'm working with Emma and Jess to roll that and support them across the city. So the minimum standards and the programme operational standards have been set by the DFE. But I'm just going to go through and talk a little bit about it. So the premise and the standards of the programme is really to focus on healthy food, really encourage young people during the summer to engage and have health food and offer and healthy food in all the projects and while the activities are running. Enriching activities, so that really can mean anything. So we try to have a really varied offer across the city, from physical activity to arts, crafts, gardening, whatever we are doing. There's so many providers this year doing a variety of things, from blacksmithing to beekeeping, trips to the peak, trips to the beach. So there's a whole array of stuff happening that children can access who are as well across the city. Physical activity again is a huge aspect of the programme. Providers who can provide physical activity aspect to their programme are encouraged to provide about one hour a day during the, while the kids are at the session. Nutritional education is another minimum standard. Nutritional education is twofold. It's kind of doing a little bit of informal discussion and chat with the children while they're eating their lunch or eating their breakfast, talking about picking healthy choices, healthier options, exploring different types of food that they may never have tried before or exploring just, you know, kind of more fruit, encouraging how to incorporate more fruit and veg into their diet. But also a big part of the programme is doing cook and eat sessions as well with family cook-alongs. So families can get to experience, you know, cooking together, replicating what they might cook at the session, bringing that home, bring home a recipe box with them so they can replicate it later on in the week. And then again, policies and procedures is a important aspect of the programme because we're working with children. And in terms of safeguard and health and safety, there is a certain core set of policies and procedures each organisation needs to have in place before they can deliver the programme. A few other requirements is each provider needs to be inclusive for sending rural children. If that's not applicable to Sheffield. The provision needs to be offered to every child who is eligible for free school meals in the city. 85% of the funding goes to those who are in receipt of free school meals. However, we have a little bit of leeway with 15% of the funding can be used for children who are not on free school meals but are definitely deemed vulnerable by providers, by local members of the community. And what I mean by vulnerable, they may be vulnerable to income poverty, food poverty, maybe a child in care, living in an area of very high deprivation. So there is access for children who are not eligible, but they can access the programme as well. The criteria is kind of four hours a day, four hours a day, four days a week. So it's one week at Easter, four weeks in summer and one week at Christmas. So it's during the children's school holidays. I need water. So the local coordinator objective across the city is to really lead the children over the summer. It's addressing the holiday gap when children are out of school. But they eat more healthy, they're more active, they're taking part and engaging, enriching activities. They're safe and not isolated. You're having a good summer of fun. We want children to really enjoy the summer. They have maybe a better knowledge of health and nutrition at the end of it. And schools have told us that those children who have participated in the programme, that transition back to school after the summer is a lot more, less stressful, more streamlined for those children and greater knowledge and awareness of what happens in the local area in terms of holiday provision as well. And so what we have done as a council and working with our half-coordinators throughout the city is what we've done, we've mapped provision of where they might need provision based on the number of free school meal children in each area and based on the indices of deprivation that Hudda mentioned earlier. We've awarded funding. We believe at the moment currently, we're going to work with nearly 135 different providers this summer. So that's ranging from your really well-known, high, large football clubs in the city. Some water. It's a very small grassroots organisations that are spread across all of the school localities. It's very much a very place-based approach that we're taking. We're supporting providers to make sure providers have the equipment, the resources, the support that they need to deliver the activities, that they have all of their policies and procedures in place. And if they need any support around capacity building within the organisation, we're there to support and help them so they can deliver the best programme that the council children. Promoting provision is a huge part of the project. Tomorrow, a letter will go to every eligible household in the city inviting them to participate on the programme with a link to our booking website. Families don't have to, just don't have to use the booking website. You can email in and phone us in and we can support families to get onto the programme and direct families to provision, which is locally, and to providers who are delivering locally in every area. And another part of this was a big core part of the programme really is working in partnership as well. We have seven partnerships across the city. They're based on the map of the seven school locality areas as well. And probably about anywhere between 20, 30, 40 providers in each of those localities, depending on the number of children that are eligible in each locality. I suppose the funding is, we know now that the funding is going to be in situ for three years. So we really want to work with providers and build capacity within the sector, within the staff and really look at sustainable approaches as well across Sheffield in terms of holiday activities with food. So just to give you some key facts around, the model again is four days per week, four hours a day. School-aged children, so it's children who are in reception to year 11 from roughly age four to age 16. It's a citywide offer, so as I said, every eligible household in the city will get an offer tomorrow. And the booking site will go live next week. And provision starts on the 25th of July, when the school holidays, when the break up for school holidays. The total fund for 2022 is £2.7 million. And as I said, the funding is based on the number of children eligible for free school meals in each area. So in Sheffield, we have roughly 25,000 children who are eligible and that breaks down to 14,500 households. So Sheffield City Council is the lead and guess this is what the partnership approach is. Twenty-eight family of schools and we have seven localities coordinators across the city. And then all of us together are working with grassroots organisations, communities of interest, after-school clubs, physical activity providers, sports clubs, adventure clubs, museums, music and dance, arts, cultural tiers, you name it. Nearly everyone that can provide services to children in Sheffield are involved in some way. We have partnered with Voluntary Action Sheffield, who are supporting providers with capacity building. Capacity building in terms of providers who would like to become a half provider, but they may not have all the policies, procedures in place. So making them sure that they can have your place and apply for funding in the future. And those who have, who still might need a little bit of support, smaller grassroots organisations up to larger organisations, looking at some capacity building in terms of training and what their service needs to deliver a good quality service to these children and families for the summer. And another really important aspect of the project is listening to the voice of young people. We really need to hear what young people want to do. We really, the provision is for them and it should really be tailored by them. So last year, we carried out a large piece of voice work across the city with 21 organisations and we spoke to over 800 children. So they really gave their opinions of what they would like to do with the summer and how they'd like the summer to be shaped in terms of the types of activities they would like. And, you know, places they would like to see, what they would like to do, the food they would like to eat and all that. What really came out strong from that consultation from young people was trips. How people, these children sometimes don't have the opportunity to leave Sheffield. So we're really encouraging. So we're really encouraging providers, if they can, to really utilise that this year and take children out to the peak, take them to the beach, take them within the means that they can. Just get them out of the city and just see more of what's around. As I said, it's a citywide, we have a place-based partnership approach across the city. We really want children not to travel too far for the provisions. So we really have mapped it out that we have provision across all school localities and local to all children. We have a citywide offer from centrally commissioned from the council. That's primary or larger sports providers. We have a really excellent swimming offer, it's really usually busy. And I think we have about 180 places per week for swimming across the summer. And then the locality's coordinators for each area is, Sora is doing A and part of B. The bottom half, the Brian Brave is coordinated by Reach Up Use and Saliquet. Mary and Catherine, Debbie will give you more in-depth now of what's happening in this area, is Manor Castle, locality D, Sheffield Wednesday Football Club, Community Foundation. Healy City Farm is doing locality E. Shawra Community Forum is doing locality F and Zest is doing locality G. And again, just a short side around the types of activities that are on offer. And we are, I guess we have to think about the age range. We have huge uptake from primary aged children, they're very keen, they're very eager to get involved in the programme. This summer we're really working hard to try to increase the participation of the older children, especially around 14, 15-year-olds. We have DJs from the Lead Mills doing work, the Music Club. Sports clubs are kind of targeting older age group as well. So we're really trying to work hard on that. But this is the type of stuff, schools, after-school clubs, holiday clubs are delivering. Voluntary organisations are doing picnics in the park, lots of activities, games, bring a pack lunch or a hot lunch, doing a lot of cooking and eating together, sessions across the city. Move more physical activities, lots of physical activity going to happen from basketball to baseball, to rural hockey, to football, you name it, there's lots of choice. The museums, theatres are doing stuff, music and arts, food growers, libraries are involved, doing sessions in the library and outside in green areas. And then we have a number of organisations who specifically take young people from the city and bring them out to the peak on outdoor activities and adventure. So this is our booking website. The website is broken down into, once a parent registers, registered a child, we're broke down into your postcode. So once you click through a postcode, a page will come up and you'll be able to see every provider who's delivering activities within that area along your postcard. We're really encouraging providers to work together. If one provider is booked out, please make sure that they'll send kids and families on to other provisions. So we do work together and hopefully have all the provisions booked out for the summer. That's me. Sorry. Whirlwind, whirlwind. Well. Great, thank you. So, can people hear me? Yeah, okay. So I'm Debbie Matthews, I work for Manor Castle Development Trust. Those of you who know me, you need to be impressed, I managed to get four logos up there without having to call out our trust IT support officer. So a little bit of background, we, as a trust, we've been delivering healthy holiday hunger, as it was called, from 2017. Mary made reference to the fact that the council has been funding work for a number of years and it was a very limited amount of money. And we made really good use of that money, working with our grassroots organisations and focusing on making sure that we got food with some activities to the children who needed it most. And we, sorry, ignore the dates, the last few years have just merged into one for me, so just ignore the dates. And we have been working with Voluntary Action Sheffield. When the first round of DFE funding was announced, we worked with V.A.R.S. to actually put in a bid with a delivery plan to actually run the DFE programme, which was in 2020, as Fidelma mentioned. And unfortunately, that was the year where we were in lockdown and we ended up having to focus on distributing food and activity packs. And I think we delivered about 1,000 food hampers a week during that summer. And it was the hugest logistical task that I've ever been involved in. We took over Park Centre Hall and we had about 30 volunteers working with us, unpacking lorries and packing food into hampers and distributing hampers. The following year, we were, we still did hampers but we did more face-to-face work. But it was limited in terms of numbers just because of Covid and needing to do social distancing and make sure that things were Covid-secure. And so we've been doing that. This year is probably the first year that everything is all focused on actually just delivering activities with food involved in the activities and no food parcels. And luckily, the council have been distributing food vouchers to all children on free school meals. So what we're doing is added value really to getting the basics in place. So Hudda asked me to think about challenges and talk about positives. And I have to say the challenges list is far longer than the positives list, but that doesn't mean the positives aren't good. But it has been really challenging for a number of reasons. We work across the east, which is Manor Castle Ward, Richmond Ward, Park and Arbuthon, and obviously Manor Castle. And it's a huge area and we have got the second highest number of children eligible for free school meals in the city compared to, and the north has got slightly more than us. So we have got way more than 5,000 children who are on free school meals in this area. And that doesn't include children who are also vulnerable but don't quite meet that criteria. And we know that there's a lot of children who fit into that category as well. So that's one of the challenges. The second one has been reaching teenagers. And I think that's partly because we're still going through a learning process. We did some evaluation work with the council, but we also did some work in Park Academy. We got an opportunity to come to an open day and we actually spoke to young people. That gives us an opportunity to start tailoring to what teenagers actually want and investing in those activities. We've got more over the summer for teenagers than we had in the previous holiday. So we're starting to manage to do that and it'll be interesting to see whether we do actually attract more teenagers. I also think the DFE criteria, which I've put up there as a challenge, makes it harder for us to work with teenagers because not all teenagers have got friends who have got, who fit the criteria. And teenagers want to be with their friends. And the 15% leeway gives us some opportunity around that. But actually it does exclude young people and it is stigmatising. And we have tried to argue with the DFE that they need to think about that because what they are doing is stigmatising children and it doesn't feel inclusive in the way that we would like to do things. And money, yeah, money, it's interesting. When we didn't have a lot of money, it was a lot easier in some ways because we were working with providers who were used to working on very tight budgets, on shoelings. Money has changed the relationship and we are now having to manage the expectations of some providers, not all providers. We still get providers who will come and say, just give us a few hundred pounds and we can deliver you this. And then we've got others who come and want basically a third of the whole budget. So it's becoming a much more challenging around managing expectations, being fair and making sure that we're getting the resources into the places where they need to be. And we're starting to refine some of that. So we've now got a really robust process where we evaluate proposals, where, sorry, where we start off with deadlines, evaluating proposals, working out value for money, going back and negotiating and trying to reach an agreement so we can fund the work that the providers want to deliver, but they might not get all the allocation that they actually wanted from the first, excuse me, the first proposal. And the, I've put IPALP as a challenge. It's actually, in principle, it could be a really good system, really good booking system. And it also does your monitoring for you, which for providers is great. But it is challenging for families to actually access it. If you're digitally excluded, it's a challenge. If English is not your first language, it's a challenge. And we have put some things in place to try and support families, both the council and us locally. But we're aware that it's a challenge. And we had a bit of a hiccup last week where some things went live and it wasn't actually fully up to date. So there are challenges with it. And if I'm honest, this week it's been my biggest headache. I needed a glass of wine last night after my experience. Due diligence as well. It is a DFE programme and the DFE have also learnt that they've started to tighten up their criteria. So they are much tighter on due diligence, they are much tighter on the criteria. And that's been a challenge for us and it's been a challenge particularly for the smaller organisations who might not have got all that due diligence in place. And V.A.R.S., we've asked, some providers have gone to V.A.R.S. for support and we've tried to support some as well. But it is a real challenge and it has excluded some. I know that there's a couple of providers who don't want to participate in it anymore because it's too hard for them because the criteria is too strict. The holidays that are covered by the DFE programme is Christmas, summer and Easter. And the council are still contributing money to the half-term holidays that are covered by the DFE. But that in itself has now become a bit of a challenge because it's a small amount, a lot smaller amount of money. And young people have said, have questioned why we haven't got the spread of activities in half-term that we have over the Easter and summer. And we can't work with as many providers, we just can't do it. You know, I think we had about £2,000 per ward for the half-term holiday, which is compared to what we've got per week during the DFE-funded programme, which is roughly 50,000 a week. It's not comparable. So for us, the DFE amount of money is an issue and we are thinking about what is the legacy? And how can we train people? How can we put resources into communities that are last longer than the DFE programme? And I have to say, it's really hard work. I'm a workaholic and I will put in the hours. I don't think I've ever worked as hard as when I was leading on this programme. It is relentless because every six weeks you've got to have a programme ready to go. And that involves proposals, budgets, monitoring, checking due diligence. And it is really relentless. And I let our coordinator have a week's holiday this week, thinking it was a good week to do it. It's never having a holiday ever again. It really has not been that easy this week. And positives, we are reaching lots and lots and lots of families and children and providing a really good offer of activity and food. And the food offer wasn't great, I have to say, at the beginning, but it is improving and we are getting better at that and monitoring it as well. It's obviously a three-year programme, so we know what's coming over the next few years. And we are going to get to the point where we're going to have a year's planning, not just holiday by holiday. And we've got a good, I think we've got a good model of coordination. So Manor Castle Development Trust is not doing it all on our own. We have got, we've got somebody from Darnall Wellbeing who is doing some coordination in Darnall. They've got all the connections, they've got the local knowledge, which we don't have. And working with somebody in Richmond, we've got Craig who works for MASC in Manor. He's really well-connected. And then Holly, who actually does work for Manor Castle Development Trust until Friday, when she goes on maternity leave, has led on coordinating the Arbuthon offer. And they've got relationships with schools, with providers, with families, with children. And that's worked really well for us. And then I've got Connor, who is our overarching coordinator, who is looking at the due diligence side and the paperwork and the admin and the bureaucracy. And he'll be doing some of the monitoring as well. The other positives for me has been building our relationship with the schools. So the schools have worked really well with us. And I now go to the South Sheffield Education Learning Partnership Poverty Strategy Group, which has really played into this agenda and understanding what schools need from us in order to target the children who have got the most needs, not just on free school meals, but they know the really vulnerable families who are going to get excluded. And relationship with most of the providers. We haven't got a great relationship with one or two, I will be honest. But actually, most of the providers, we have got a really good working relationship and we know we can negotiate and we can have conversations about how things are going. And I'm just going to put this up, but I'm sure that it'll go around. But these are some of the providers that we're working with over the summer holidays. And you can see it's quite abroad. We're bringing in some external organisations who are not local because of what their offer is. So the Onboard Skate Park is new to us and they're really good at working with teenagers. And again, it's something that teenagers said that they were interested in, so we've brought them in. Arbuthon and Norfolk Park, we've got a number of local organisations. The best art communities is Manor Castle Development Trust and they do a family approach. So they target young children who've got siblings who are older. So they work with a whole family rather than just with individual children. We've got Links, the School Sports Partnership, who are a really trusted partner and have been delivering with us since 2017. Manor Castle, Richmond is a little bit light, I have to say. Richmond is one of the areas where I think we've lost a couple of providers because of the nature of the programme and the criteria. Woodhouse District Forum are a new provider this time. They've got the due diligence in place, ready to go. Sheffield Wednesday are up there twice because they're actually doing work in different schools. So they're doing work in schools but they're also doing work in communities as well. And so that just gives you a flavour. And then in terms of what we're offering, Fidelma put up a really good list of what's going on. These are some of the things that we've actually got going on in our area. It's not completely exclusive, but it just gives you a flavour of the breadth and depth of what we are actually able to deliver across the east area. It's not, everything's not in every single ward, it depends on the local area. And next steps, we're going to be looking, well, the programme goes live on IPALP on the 4th of July. So families will be able to book onto provision from there. We'll be working with ward-based allocations. So what we do is we get the free school meal data from every single school in our area. We work out which ward they're in and then we have an allocation for each ward that we try to then manage and make sure that each ward gets the allocation that reflects the free school meals children. Not as easy as it sounds, but we're getting a little bit better at that. And we want to work out, we want to work with the schools to work out what they need more in order to support them to target the children because some schools are better than others. Some schools have got named people who work with us and others don't. And we are looking at how we better assess the value for money. It is full cost recovery, but we are now looking at value for money. So we've had a provision that goes from being about £12, £13, £15 per child right up to 70, 80 per child. So in order to make the budget work as well as we can, we are looking at how do we find our way in the middle of that. There's a better way of assessing how many children we're reaching. We're not sophisticated about that. The monitoring system this time will tell us whether we, how many unique children we're working with rather than how many children turn up to each session. Because you could get the same child coming to lots and lots of sessions and we're looking at how far are we reaching. More tailoring, what we actually commission, mentioned that we want to target teenagers more. Mentioned that we want to target teenagers more and put on more of what they want. Supporting providers to meet the due diligence, which is really challenging for some. And then the summer programme, Ready to Go, we're already thinking about October. Because the minute you've started, you've got one programme going, you need to be thinking about the next. And I'll leave it there. Sorry, I'm nearly choking.
Okay, thanks very much. You know, it's a lot of money, but a lot of work, Debbie. And it sounds as though, anyway, it's a lot of money and a lot of work that goes with it. So have we got any questions from the public about the programme? It's a really good programme. I've got lots, but I think you've answered some of them as we've gone along, so I'll just leave it at that one. But I think it is important about stigmatizing kids. I think that's something we need to tackle. And also those kids who don't get free school meals, but are mates or cousins or friends and you name it, are the ones that do. And we just need to be very inclusive. Anyway, we.
Can I just say, Mary, just adding, some of the providers have been really good at looking at two things. One is actually getting some match funding in so that they can take children who don't meet the criteria and feed them. And the other one is, some of them are looking at a mixed economy. So free school meals children can come for free and that's fine. But some are actually offering places where you have to pay. But if you pay, you get your dinner. So trying to look at different ways of managing that. So it helps de-stigmatize and it increases reach. And for some providers it's working, others not so good. So there's a bit more thinking about how we do that and also where that takes us after the three years.
I would just like to say that you've got a legacy, to make this as sustainable as we possibly can. Are there any questions? I know I've got one from Mike. Mike, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. I think there was a fairly obvious imbalance in the slides you presented regarding the number of partner organisations in each ward. So I'd like to ask, well, I think there was an imbalance, not just in terms of the fact there were fewer organisations delivering in Richmond, but I don't know, there may be an argument for Woodhouse Forum, but there wouldn't seem to be no local organisations either. So I'd just like to know what extra effort you will all be putting in to try and address this imbalance? Because I think it's essential that children in Richmond don't suffer because of a lack of delivery rate, as actually happened during the pandemic, we know. Because, you know, Richmond seemed to suffer in terms of delivery of additional resources during the pandemic because of a lack of a large organisation and co-organisation to represent Richmond. So what can you do to address this imbalance? Because I assure you, community groups and councillors in Richmond feel this very keenly. Thank you.
So the one thing I would say is that Richmond has got an allocation which matches, which is proportionate to the number of free school meals children. And the budget that is being spent in Richmond is the budget for Richmond. So whilst there's not as many providers, there is still that spend going on in Richmond. And the number of places for children in Richmond are there. It's just, it's Sheffield Wednesday and it's some of the other providers who are delivering that. So the resources are there. When it was the pandemic, Richmond did receive the free school meal parcels as well. And again, it was proportionate. And we did work with the smaller local organisations to do some of that. So we worked with Woodstock Tara and we worked with, I can't remember, The Link, Helen at The Link. So we have got the relationships, but they, we send them the information out, they get the proposal forms. They know what's, they know they are welcome to get involved, but they've chosen not to. And Helen in particular, I'll talk about Helen in The Link. Helen is more than capable of filling that proposal form in and meeting the due diligence. She's just chosen not to do it this time. So I will, we've got Rosie Andrasi, who's the coordinator in Richmond, who's got all the links with those organisations and all the schools. And I'll have a conversation with Rosie about going back and having that conversation of what else can we do to support them? They're not the only ones. We've had members, groups in Norfolk Park drop out as well for the same reason. Because the due diligence is onerous and the monitoring for some of them has felt too onerous as well.
I'm reassured on the spending, so thank you for that additional information. That's certainly welcome. But just regarding that point, I'm kind of uncomfortable with talking about organisations where their representatives aren't in the room, to be honest. But one thing I will say from talking to organisations in Richmond, I think they felt unsupported at times, certainly. So any additional work that could be done to support organisations would be very welcome. Because I'm not sure the idea that they've just chosen not to do it this time chimes with my conversations with them and the conversations with my colleagues with them. I did detect a keenness to participate, but they just felt hamstrung in many ways. And that's what I've been told by them.
So it depends on what they've been, what they feel that they've been hamstrung by?
We're running a bit behind, but we've got one presentation left from Hudders, who's going to talk about the activities that the lack have been carrying out over the last long year, is it? Can you say that?
Good afternoon, everyone. Very quickly, I was going to say I've got some good news and bad news. The bad news is I've got a PowerPoint presentation. The good news is I'm the last speaker. I always put this slide up because it just means hello and welcome to the different community languages that we've got in Sheffield. And I always say when I start these presentations, salaam alaikum, because that's my community language. My presentation is going to be in three sections, but I'm not really going to spend time talking about individual, talking in detail about those sections. Because my presentation is already in your park anyway, so feel free to read it. What I will talk about is just briefly, some of the work that we're already doing. You know, this is despite the money. This is the way that we're already, that we're using pop money or work pop money or community infrastructure levy money. And at the last meeting, I said to you that what we did in our East Lack is amalgamated the priorities together. So we've got crime and social behaviour and community and neighbourhoods together. And the reason for that really was for us as officers in the council to kind of think about what is already happening in those, in those services that address community safety and so on and neighbourhoods. And we've set up working groups and it's work in progress. We've got people together and we've got some actions. And we're kind of carrying on working with members to make sure that those actions that we've identified under those priorities are actually implemented. And again, I've just highlighted some of the, some of the good work that we're doing. You know, we've got through our SILL money, we've got Richmond, back to employer Richmond Development Worker. And I know, Debbie, I've been talking to you about kind of setting up a voluntary sector forum and so on. And then quickly for the environment highways and transport, again, working with the officers in the council about what is it we need to do in terms of addressing flight interruption ways? It's a massive issue for us, like my colleague mentioned earlier. Yeah, we've got the day of action and we need to do more. It's not, we know, we can't come up with the solutions overnight, it takes time. But we are working towards it. And we are listening to members of the public, to residents. We are trying gradually to involve them in the work that we're doing. And then quickly, children, young people, health and wellbeing. Again, you know, we funded some kind of really positive activities over Christmas. I put the picture of Diane and her colleagues in the Tree of Hope we funded to provide in the Christmas tree. It kind of brings that community spirit and so on. And again, at the cost of living at the moment, we're working with councils about how do we address the issues around the cost of living? At the moment, we're producing a comprehensive guide for a voluntary community sector organisation, just to signpost them to say, where do you need to go and who do you need to contact and what advice do you need and so on? And then quickly, just before that, you might wonder, why have you put down Queen's Jubilee funding? The reason I've put that down is because members asked me to kind of talk about it as a model of good practice. And really what happened there was, we were, last we were giving the £6,000 and then we were told, you need to spend it quickly. We weren't given an awful lot of time to spend it. So what we did was, we put it out there and we asked people to put an expression of interest. What is it they're going to do? What sort of activities are they going to do to kind of celebrate the Jubilee? And really here, this just illustrates a diverse range of applications that we had. And here, kind of some of the activities that put before, you know, we have dance productions to, you know, friendship lunches and charity accommodation. It's really good and it's really diverse, really quick. And we didn't spend an awful lot of time, kind of stuck on bureaucracy when it comes to funding. Again, one of my colleagues put some statistics together around how many people are flied, what amount of money we avoided and so on. And again, a pie chart that we put together and then some photos of activities and how people are kind of enjoying themselves. And I suppose the purpose of putting the Jubilee kind of model is to kind of really illustrate that's where we want to get to as last. Whatever projects we're producing, we want to be able to demonstrate the impact of the funding that we've allocated. We want to see some positive impacts. We want to leave some legacy. And we want to make sure that people have actually achieved what they're supposed to achieve. So really, the next steps for me is we've agreed the spending plan. What I want to do is make sure that we spend it properly in accordance with what we agreed on. And we hope to present further information about what we've done so far in the next public meeting. We've got provisional dates, 18th of October. And then in the agenda item that we've got next, we're going to be talking, we're going to open up to the public and ask them to say, what else do you want to include in the next item in October? But very quickly, I know we wish to time, because I don't want to spend time. Does anybody want to ask me any questions?
No? Yeah, this is about the Park Hill parking scheme. At the last LAC meeting, and as other councillors have also said, we were told that it wouldn't go ahead if the majority of residents didn't want it. Out of the 1,066 responses, only 46 were in favour of the scheme, which is just 4.3%, so 95.7 are against it. So will this parking scheme now be abandoned? As this clearly shows, the scheme does not have community support and the majority of residents don't want it. And then the councillor in an email today has said that the scheme has overwhelmingly been rejected by residents. So that's, you know, we want the scheme abandoned and it's going to cost far too much money.
Okay, well, I'm not going to answer that question directly. I know there's a process to be gone through and I absolutely, I've got the figures here as well. And mine are the same as yours, more or less, I think. I've got 1,300 responses to the consultation with 1,000 objections and 40 in support. That will have to go through, through its stages. And I think when the programme was in, when the proposal was first made, I don't know if it was pre-COVID or just as COVID was starting, things had moved on. This will, the report will go to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Change Committee once this, the whole process has been carried out and the report written. And they will make the decision about what's going to, what's going to happen next. So 1,000, 1,300, 1,000 objections, 40 in favour. It will go to the committee and they will make a decision.
Well, I just talked to the councillor, you know what?
I can't, we can't make that decision now.
Well, not you, but I mean, the ones our councillors have said.
Well, individual councillors can no longer make decisions like that. The leader of the council can no longer make decisions.
I know they're impartial, but they've got to listen to the residents.
No, because we've got a committee system and all decisions are made by committee or delegated to officers depending on the importance of the decision. So it will go to a committee where councillors will consider a report and make a decision. There will be a recommendation from officers, no doubt, and they will make that decision at that committee meeting. So that's the process we now have to go through. Because we've now got a committee system rather than a cabinet model and strong leader model. I know that doesn't, you're not going to get a firm answer yes or no from me tonight. So Stephen Bergen, again, Park Hill, I think.
Yes, thank you. The question I've got to ask is basically along the same lines with the Park Hill and Norfolk Park permit scheme. And it's about the initial business case that was sent out to us here. And I just want to ask, have you all read this business case? Have you looked at it?
I have not seen the business case.
Right, because the business case is predicated on two bits of research. One was done by the International Parking Initiative, which drew a whole load of references from America and has based a lot of its support on a comment about 30% of parking, no, 30% of time is wasted by people trying to park. That was a throwaway comment in a comments section from the parking director of Greenwich, Connecticut in America, that had a population of 63,000. The next bit of research was done that said, moving parking out of the city centre and making people park for it increases the amount of footfall and visitors to the area. That was based on a piece of research done in Amsterdam, of which 45% of people use a car, but 36% use a bike. So you can't count apples and pears. So I've done a fair bit of research into this. So basically, my question is, the amount of money that is going to be wasted, literally wasted, bearing in mind at the full council meeting, the council is looking at up to a £60 million deficit next year. My point is, why don't you throw it out now and stop wasting any more money?
Okay, so our process has been, we're going through a process and the councillors cannot make a decision about what is stopped and not stopped. We'll go through the process. I can't tell you how much it's costing, I've no idea how much it's costing. Your point, your question has been recorded. It will go to the right officer for a response. And this is, as far as I understand it, the plan is it will go to a committee later in the year. So Rosely Diane Hill, similar question.
Yes, and this is a question you probably can't answer because it's really one for the officers. Were any alternatives to parking permits and meters considered as a means of addressing extraneous parking in the area? For example, no parking before 9:30 AM, as currently prevails on parts of Duke Street and City Road. Were such alternatives tested and compared in terms of ease of enforcement? And secondly, were the parking needs for access to community buildings such as Park Centre and Library considered before drawing up the scheme? Was the councillor aware of the importance of activities in Park Centre to community cohesion, the improvement of health and the reduction of social isolation and poverty? I should just add to that, that of course, imposing any additional costs on users at this time is inappropriate. We are talking about the problems for people accessing Park Centre, which is predominantly aimed at people in the Park Hill and Wyburn communities. The Wyburn community will not have parking permits, but it will need parking permits as the present scheme stands to access all the facilities that we offer in Park Centre. and Library. I expect a response in writing when officers have been consulted on this. Thank you.
I totally agree with previous speakers that have noticed the concern of local residents about the parking scheme. So I do hope councillors will rethink this. Just one simple example, um, on, on my street, some of the houses have got drives, but those drives are too narrow for modern cars. So the cars can't actually drive into the drive. So obviously people park outside the drive. On the scheme, this will now be yellow lines, so we won't be able to park outside our own drives, we'll have to park outside somebody else's house. Um, and there'll be less parking space for, for the whole neighbourhood. But anyway, what I want to point out today is if you are going to rethink it, which I hope you do, I'd like you again to consider the climate and ecological emergency, which you keep ignoring. And to do that, you need to persuade people to find alternative measures of transport apart from petrol and diesel cars. So I would highly recommend that in the scheme you provide some safe, um, secure parking for bicycles so that people in houses of multiple occupation and hostels can safely park a bike. And I would highly recommend that you provide some provision for EV charging because at the moment, if you haven't got a drive to park your car on, there's no way you can buy an EV car because you'd have to put the lead across the pavement, which is illegal. So by twenty thirty, we've got to get our emissions down to zero. Yeah?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Um, I'm new to the area. I moved back here in July from Ukraine last year. My son's now going to school at Appleston. And we seem to have a bit of a problem and I'm not sure which department this is going to go to. We have a bus service that runs up Hansworth Road, which invariably is late to school. I regularly see it coming into school at quarters, quarters at nine. I mean, the children are ten minutes late, so as a consequence, a lot of parents are actually walking, which is good. So I feel that walking is good, but then they have to cross the Hansworth Parkway roundabout. Um, a couple of times, my wife and child have nearly been killed on there with people speeding. I did think when I left Sheffield that there was actually a set of traffic lights on, on the slip roads there, but they seem to have disappeared. There's no crossing there for people to cross. So as a consequence, I'm now forced to take my family in a car to Appleston School. So I'm now making the problem worse at Appleston School. And whilst they've managed to clear the area of parking close to the school because they don't want any children to be knocked over, we've transferred the problem to the outlying roads. We also have a playing field at the top of the Appleston School with a car park in it, which belongs to the recreation ground, hence the reason why I don't know which department I'm talking to. Why are we not utilising recreation department property or land as such to utilise for parking? I would like to know the reasons for that. I assume there's insurance reasons or health and safety reasons. But at the moment, I've got a problem with the transport, highways, education, because they've basically pushed out the problem to, to our new roads and the recreation department. Thank you.
We'll, um, we'll go to that school.
There's no return bus. So anybody that's actually trying to get across the Parkway Hansworth crossing area, have utilised the bus, great, if it turns up and if it's not late, there's no return bus.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's, so like you said, there's various, maybe there's various services in the council we need to go to in terms of that, to answering that question. Yeah.
I think that's a really good question, particularly about the, the quality of bus services across the city. And most people who've been following the media over the last few days will notice that in October, we expect to see a reduction of bus services, of about a third of bus services being cut. We're seriously concerned about that. Um, I know that you have got understandable concerns about the quality of bus services at the moment. You talk about they've been late, perhaps not even turning up, about them not being good at all, um, for getting to where you want to. That is something that we need to be dealing with and I know that the, the mayor of the, the combined authority, Oliver Copart, is committed to ensuring that we have a bus franchising, which would involve us taking back, um, public control of our buses and being able to actually dictate which routes and start planning which routes that they're going to be able to, to, to operate. Because at the moment, it is a free-for-all, a Wild West. Um, and actually, us as elected members here have no democratic control over those bus routes. So I think we share your frustration. It is rubbish. Um, it involves a significant amount of public subsidy that goes into our buses that has very little democratic control and, and needs some change really, for all those reasons that you're talking about in terms of quality of life, but also for the environment as well. So I would agree with you.
We had one of the best, sorry, the best transport system in the world. We had other cities coming to see how we ran our transport and I'm just disappointed to see how it's failed under privatisation.
And is it, sorry, is it, okay, just come back. And, and I would agree with you. It's, you know, we've seen bus patronage decrease hugely, um, really significantly since, since the period that you're talking about when we had regulation of our buses. And, and since then, actually, we've got no control over it. The service has been, has, has been decreased to a level that actually is, is not sustainable for people to be able to get to work, to be able to get to school, to be able to do their normal lives. And, and you're right, we do need to see drastic changes in that and we need to see bus franchising.
I think that was a very long time ago that you're talking about when we regulated the buses and we had cheap bus fares. It was many, 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 many years ago.
Be able to answer this, I hope. Uh, it's, it's not, it's not about the parking scheme. Yeah, David Cobley. Um, it's a shame really that councillor Richards is not here because she, she would know and, and she's suffered like the rest of us in trying to get, uh, for the last three years, she's been trying to get, uh, some traffic calming measures on Donnington Road, Essex Road and Holdings Road. Um, we were promised, um, through councillor Richards that there'd be a consultation about this on the third of, uh, March. We were promised again that it would be on the tenth of March. It's not happened, right? Now, in the last few days, well, in the last week or so, um, councillor Richards has told us that there's a draft scheme in force and that the council indicated that they will use the CIL money to fund such a scheme and that that money is already available. Now, I've got that in writing from councillor Richards. Now, we also went, uh, to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee meeting and raised the same, um, uh, the same, uh, point. Now, the written confirmation, contrary to what I've just said that's come back, um, has said that, that, that the officers have developed options and that these have been sent to the lack committee to decide if they, they can fund such a scheme. So my first question is, can you confirm that you have received these options and that you were positively considering the funding, which councillor Richard's advisers is available? That's the first question. I know you may not answer it tonight and I'm very patient, I will wait. So following on from the fact that there are hundreds of vehicles using this Donnington Road in particular as a rack room, and that's daily, um, South Yorkshire Police have steadfastly, for whatever reason, refused to respond to an FOI request about the number of penalty notices that have been issued for drivers, um, ignoring the, the no right and no left terms, which are on St Aidan's Road into those three roads. They won't reply. Um, however, we've now been told, this is second question, that the council have been, um, devolved powers so that in actuality, uh, they can start to apply for enforcement powers to use camera enforcement for, for these moving traffic offences. Can you confirm, please, that if the, has the council applied for these powers? And if so, when do they plan to start using them along this area before there's another serious accident? If not, when are they going to apply? My third question, which I'll shut up in a minute, I'm sorry, let everyone wants to go on to bed. Um, and I've seen it up there as well, but our dear friend, I know you were rushing, but, uh, vehicle activated speed signs. Um, I, I understand and I've read it with my own eyes on that Facebook thing, if, right, that Netheredge, um, and I think at least one, if not other, two other wards, um, have actually set out a programme where they, they are going to, uh, they're going to put eight-week trials for these signs onto various roads. What's the position as regards these signs in Lack East? A, have you got them? And B, have you actually sat down and decided where they're going to be, um, set up? Is there a programme? Now, I, I think you can answer that. Ben's, Ben's nodding because I know, yeah, go on, go on, my man.
Yeah, there's, there's, um, we have, there will be a scheme where we'll be installing these VAS, um, well, it's not smiley face, is it? It's a speed, a speed activated, a speed activated system. So if you're driving over the limit, it'll tell you how fast you are. And it'll record the number of motorists who are speeding on a particular area as well. So those have, those have been ordered and they will, um, and they will be installed. And like you said, there will be, there will.
I understand, sorry to interrupt, but I understand that Netheredge have got them. They've set out a, a programme. They've got roads.
Well, if you let me finish, yeah, if you let me finish. So, um, across the lack, each ward has, has, has ordered one of these, um, these VASs and they will be installed. And we've been asked to identify six hotspots within our areas and Manor Castle, um, and.
Donnington Road, can you put that at the top, please?
Well, I don't know where Manor Castle, I've asked for those to be installed, so there'll be one VAS and it will rotate around these six hotspots throughout the year and, but I can't tell you which roads they're on unless, anybody here, can you say that? We can provide you with a list. We can provide a list of the hotspots.
If you don't mind, because our two, um, Sergeant, um, whatever and Sergeant whatever who have gone home now to see their husbands, um, I, I think I persuaded them to put radar guns on Donnington Road.
Okay.
As well, because believe you me, I know it sounds a bit, you know, we're going on here, thirty years ago, a ten-year-old child was knocked down on that road and every single day, there's going to, there's, there's near, there's been loads of other accidents, somebody's going to get killed. I don't want, I, I personally, and there's guys here that, that live there, I want to see these speeders stop somehow or other. Um, again, Netheredge, I know it's a bit controversial, but, but certain roads have been blocked off in Netheredge, haven't they? And Crox. Ben's laughing again. Yeah.
What's he called that scheme? Actually, actually. All right, I'll just answer that chap's question first because if you don't mind, so we all get confused if we don't. So those, those, um, the VAS are on order and they were in every lack area in the city as far as I understand, and I think this is correct, all those VAS signs were ordered at the same time. So Netheredge will not get them any sooner than this area will. So that's one. Um, there's a scheme in Netheredge and Crox, Ben has just reminded me of the name called Low Traffic, a low traffic area. So there, I think they have a trial in that, in, in those areas and that's, um, that's started as I understand it. Uh, we haven't received anything from, um, regarding, um, funding. We haven't had any requests for us to fund any schemes in this area because we don't have the money to fund any schemes. So however, so I don't know what, I don't know what Shonad has, has said in her email to you. However, your, your questions now are recorded and we will get you an answer and clarify what is happening.
The council involved in a second meeting succession is not here and he could probably have helped with this, bearing in mind that he chairs that committee, but he's not here. Councillor Richards and councillor Fox have got great excuses because quite rightly, they are elsewhere in France, um, as you will know. But it, it's just annoying that we're getting fobbed. And you're, you're not doing it, but we're getting fobbed off. You've been told quite clearly that the money, the CIL money is available, that it's, that the problem's been referred to like, and I hesitate to say, but somebody's telling porkies.
Well, can I just say, for first start, still money is owned by a ward, not by the lack. So the still money in Manor Castle is, is owned by Manor Castle, not by Darnall, not by the East Lack. It's their still money to spend on schemes that they think it needs to be spent on. So there is still money. I can't tell you how much they've got, um, but there will be still money there, same as Darnall's got still money, which we will spend on our area for projects that we think we need in our area. So the still money is there. Whether, you know, then, that those councillors, councillors will make that decision as to what they think that money is, needs to be spent on. Um, so I, that's, that's a fact, um, but I don't know what has been said at another committee meeting. Um, as you say, um, the leader of council and Shonad, uh, the Lord Mayor, have gone to France to represent the, the city at the Sheffield Powells Remembers, uh, events that are going on at the moment in France. Um, they're there for a few days as far as, I think it will be a few days. So they are, they are away and couldn't be here tonight for those reasons. Okay. We, listen, I, I understand your frustration. Um, you've expressed it really well and you're obviously very, very concerned about speeding as all of us are here, particularly because, you know, it's, it's children that, everybody's at risk, but children, we worry about them because, you know, they don't think before they're crossing roads, they just, you know, they're not as cautious as older people are.
Saying sentiments about his own children. And I think it's, it really is about time that we start putting the safety of our children up at there at the top. I mean, yeah, by all means, feed them, clothe them and all the rest of it, but if the children are knocked down and killed by speeding cars, enough said. We need to start prioritising it.
Well, I think, I think there are priorities there. I do really do believe that we have got priorities that are about, you know, speeding traffic and children and so on. Have you got something, another question?
You were not.
Sorry, sorry. Hang on a minute, just hang on.
MJL, last meeting, you were not able to. So, well, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't told there was somebody else. I've been given the microphone after you.
But I submitted three questions. None of them have been mentioned. Um, the last LAC meeting was very much dominated by the same people that have dominated it this time. And I really do think that we have got the message, you aren't happy about a parking scheme, but can't we move on? Because there are other people in this, in this area that have got questions about other things. And you've already taken far more of the meeting than anybody else and the meeting should have finished fifteen minutes ago. I've got three questions actually, but I'm quite sure that my question about the shuttle bus that's supposed to be going around the city centre is not going to work. My main question is about something I asked at the February meeting online about how the house in Richmond Park and other houses in the area. Your colleagues, that next you knows all about this. The estates review, uh, the estates properties of the council did reviews on lots of properties over two years ago, or approximately two years ago. There is a house in Richmond Park that has been stood empty since November nineteen twenty, twenty twenty, and it's been totally vandalised. I just want to know one way or the other, what's going to get. I just want to know one way or the other, what's going to get done with not just that house, but all the others that were under this review?
Thanks, Irene, yes. I acknowledge that you did ask it and that we've had that conversation on a number of occasions since. And as you'll be aware, because I've copied your responses, we have had an undertaking that the property will be kept in a decent state of repair until it's, until the end of the facilities management review. But we still don't know when that's going to happen. And I know that Mike's been working on this as well. And we just, we're getting lost in this, this fog. There is a review going on. It has to be done because, you know, we can't afford to have properties standing empty and we're reviewing whether we need them or not, but we can't tell when that review is going to be come to an end. And in the meantime, the properties are getting vandalised. I will make renewed efforts over the next couple of days. Well, tell them to put a bid in, because we might succumb.
Thank you. We're sorry, we can't give you a more definite answer.
No, it's.
But I know Diane is, will be working on this one.
NJL, regarding the query I made at your, at the last meeting, which you were not able to answer and said you would get me a written reply. As you know, as I told you at the beginning of this meeting, I did finally, this morning, receive a phone call from the officers actually writing the report for highways, in the highways section, on the whole parking issue. And by the way, she says it's going to a meeting, the main meeting is in November. The point I do want to make is that there is no sense at all in not having speed restrictions, retardants, controlling the speed on roads like Donnington. And if people want to see that sort of thing done, they need to get their advice to the highways department promptly. I would pursue the question of the inaccuracy of the minutes with your track.